Okay. Good evening, everybody at home. We are back in session. We earlier this evening swore in our brand-new police chief. And so we are going to continue our meeting this evening. It is Tuesday, November 27th, and we are being taped again by Area 58 to be broadcast on YouTube and local cable. So we will begin the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Did everybody have an opportunity to review the selectmen's minutes for the regular session of September 25th?
Yeah.
Regular session for October 9th and the regular session for October 23rd. Do I have the motion?
Move the measure.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Tom, do you want to take it away?
Sure. I move to affirm approval of the following warrants and commitments. Vendor warrant number 41 for $36,254.85. School warrant number 42 for the amount of $264,812.70. Payroll warrant number 43, $390,155. Vendor warrant number 44 for $4,711,563.37. Withholding warrant number 45 for $147,032.82. Vendor warrant number 46 for $386,233.21. Ambulance commitment from 10/8/18 to 10/28/18 for $159,985.70. Ambulance commitment from 10/29/18 to 11/11/18 for $59,976.60. Ambulance commitment from 11/12/18 to 11/18/18 for $59,045.50. Do I have a second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I further move to approve the following warrants. Payroll warrant number 47 for $380,928.32. Vendor warrant number 46 for $402,519.60. Withholding warrant number 49 for $135,143.74.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I also move to approve payment of selectmen bills dated November 27, 19... Oh, excuse me, 2018. And that would be for Attorney Lawrence P. Mayo in the amount of $1,025. Brooks and Durencis, PC, for $4,419.95. National Grid for Town Hall Electric, $1,041.62. National Grid for the concession stand would be a total of $54.11, and that is it for those.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have another five minutes before that.
Um, a few things. We just got notice today about Eagle Scout ceremony for frankly...
Rafferty.
Rafferty. Okay. On Sunday, December 2nd at 3... I think it's Sunday.
Oh, that's kind of late. Oh, yeah.
Is that 1:00, 2:00? Yeah, it's the 2nd.
At 3:00 PM?
3:00 PM at 575 Mopod Street, which is LA, the Lake Church. Pam and I will try and get a certificate for the board to sign later this week. I don't know who might be able to go.
I'll make an effort to be there.
Thank you, Charlie.
Late-night train service. There's a coalition of South Shore communities looking for letters of support for a program that would have the MBTA running late meeting after 11:00 PM train out to South Station to all three South Shore rail lines where the last train now leaves before 11:00. I'm inclined to send such a letter. I'm really in favor of the idea that residents here in our neighboring communities should be able to go to evening events in Boston and still be able to take that train after 11 o'clock. I'm sure if you've been any Red Sox baseball games, some of them end at 10:30, and you struggle to get back to South Station or even back Bay for that matter.
I would move that as a motion, that we support the effort.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We had some good news. We did go out to bid for the fuel storage tank removal and the replacement with the new tanks. Low bid is from Boston Green Fuel, Lakeville, Green Seal Environmental, which is the engineering firm that the highway departments used to draw up the bid specs, review the bid, and found it to be legitimate. Therefore, I'm recommending the board award this contract to Boston Green Fuel for $209,199 and sign the two copies of the contract.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I just want the board to be aware that because of the recent rains we've had all throughout November, the level of pot obviously has risen. Brockton's opened the dam more and resumed diversions that they had gone for about 10 or 15 days in the middle and late November without meaning diversions. But just, there's no action for the board to take, but we had started getting calls from residents, so I contacted the city water department, and they, in essence, opened up the gates and reinstated the diversion. So that's happening. A school renovation project, the fire suppression system, Habibin Associates have asked to amend its contract with the town to provide architectural engineering services, and that the town has had to go out to bid twice for the fire suppression system. The original contract assumed the town would go out to bid once. The amendment would increase compensation Habibin Associates by $8,420. The bids would be due on February 7th, 2019. So I'm recommending the board approve that.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And in regards to the window-siding doors contract, Lambrian has asked for approval of proposal request 14 for $662.58 to install shades that were not part of the original agreement.
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve that request?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I mentioned to the board on the committee that...
We have two managers.
The... I was going to see if there was interest in doing... Looking at least the possibility of doing electronic voting at town meeting. I'm going to follow up with that, but I know that Barbara Gaynor's going to be talking to some of her counterparts about what they're doing on the case, what firms they're using. Are they leasing to own? Are they renting? What are they doing? And how's everything work? And obviously, eventually, we'll get a price, but the aim is that if there's... We'll get some information, we'll get some prices, we'll get back to the finance committee for selectmen sometime this winter, because if we want to do it for May, then we'll have to go half an hour at the town meeting in February.
Right. So it would certainly save a lot of time and maybe encourage more people to come. My guess is... I'm going to guess. I'm going to say it's somewhere around $40,000. What do you think?
How much?
Forty.
Well, maybe buying them.
I'm not buying them.
But I'd love the towns to simply rent them.
Yeah. I didn't know you could rent them.
Yes. Because you only need them, let's say, once or twice a year, so... And the other thing is that the technology may be changing. You know, if... One of the ways I've been hearing is the possibility that you can tie in cell phones, for instance, to that. I'm not saying cell phones outside the building, I'm talking about cell phones inside the building, as an example. So I... So one of the reasons is not to buy and then have them.
I have a real problem, as you know, with electronics anyway.
But we'll get some information together. Nobody's made any decisions or anything like that, but just so the board's aware.
Buy Australian ballot, baby.
Well, in essence, every ballot would be Australian ballot.
Yeah. That's good.
Just to show the board's aware, Lakeville Animal Shelter, the town of Lakeville signed the agreement.
Yeah.
They'd asked us if we were interested in attuing the agreement with them. We did. Board approved it, signed it, sent it back. They sent it back, so we're all set. The copies are going to go to the board, the ACL, the police chief, and the rituals should be given to the town calendar.
Okay, I'm going to hold you, Charlie.
Yes, you will.
Because it's 7:40. So we are here for...
Then you get a revocation hearing, which we'll keep you talking about anyway.
Yes. Do we have...
So for revocation hearings, Davis Automotive is in good standing right now, and my recommendation for that is the board rescind its previous vote to revoke their license.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And we'll continue their hearing to January 22nd at 7:45. And then similarly, for Evergreen Twin Lakes Liquor, they're in good standing, so I'm asking the board to continue the hearing again to January 22nd at 7:45.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we'll go back to the...
Yep, we have five minutes.
Wage and personnel hearing. The hearing will be on Wednesday, January 9th at 6:30 in the Great Hall. Deadline for proposed amendments is Wednesday, December 26th. I've invited the departments to have an informal work session the week before.
On that day? Oh, the week before.
Yeah.
Did you set that date, Charlie?
Yes. And just to review the wage and personnel by law, if there are ideas, concepts, whatever, so we don't end up waiting the last minute, especially given the 26th is the day after Christmas. I'm not sure how many people are going to be thinking about the deadline on that date. Just so the board's aware, we're involved sort of tertiary in a lawsuit, Twin Lakes versus Leslie Levy, who is a owner of one of the units over at Twin Lakes. The condominium association is taking her to court for failure to pay condo fees. We're listed as one of the defendants because she owes us money to and property taxes. So I forwarded everything to Larry Mayo, so he's aware of it and he'll file whatever needs to be filed on behalf of the town. We received through Sergeant Bender a list of surplus data processing equipment that's, I guess, been sitting for a fair amount of time down in the police station accumulating. It's a total of 58 items, everything that you can imagine, but it's all obsolete or out of order, according to Sergeant Bender. So my recommendation is the whole team caboodle be sent down to the recycling center. All the hard drives have been removed, so there's no confidentiality problems.
Do we have a motion? They look just like their old computers.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On 407 South Street, that's one of the properties the town had foreclosed on, but in this case, it does have a building. It has someone living there, as far as we know. Attorney Mayo has started eviction proceedings against anyone who's living in the property. The occupants will have until December 15th if they keep the premises. If additional actions needed, Attorney Mayo will continue the process. So that's going on with that. Steve Hayward's going to be in later about the cemetery fees and regulations.
Oh, he's here now.
No, but our appointment is at...
8:15 with him.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not in a... Yeah. RG Automotive did ask to transfer their Class II license from Richard W. Green doing business as RG Automotive to RG Automotive, Inc. Basically, I think he's decided it's now his own separate corporation, separate from himself. There are no changes in the license of the name. Then we'll... We get to renewals next month. We'll renew under the new name, but if the board would approve the transfer of the Class II license...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
For Election Day, the board may want to send a note to Joy Blackwood about the parking problems that we encountered. It's been... It obviously was an unusual situation. Turnout was much higher than it's been previously for the even-numbered November elections in non-presidential years, but it was significant enough that we had problems there, and it may be something that the school system should consider. And we'd have to wait four years for it to happen again, obviously, but in 2022 for the November election, that they either have a professional day or closes school to avoid this problem in the future.
Yes. Do I have a motion?
Yes, absolutely. Because it was a horror show.
So moved, yeah, because when I went by there, there was traffic back down into the street, and people trying to get in the boat, people trying to drop their kids off.
It's bad enough under normal circumstances. It just exacerbates it and all the things. So, did you move that?
I moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And you have letters from Tom Fitzgerald. He's indicated that there'll be an additional sum of money. It'll be donated to the town for the remains of the Mayor Margaret T. Fitzgerald Memorial Garden, but he also indicated that he is resigning from his post on the beautification committee. So the board could send letters, or I guess one combined letter.
Give us my address.
Actually, he didn't provide it.
I might have that at home.
Okay. Well, we can work with...
Yeah. Do you have a letter?
So if it's sent a letter thanking him for his service and for the...
Credit for service to the town and finish the...
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
For the Fall Cleanup Day, the beautification committee reported over 20 people participated in the day a few weeks ago. They separated out the litter and the recyclables. About two-thirds of the material could be recycled.
Wow.
I'd like to thank those people who participated, and there are other people who, whether they came out that Saturday or they come out on other days, have gone out and done their own trash pickup on their own. But very slightly, I want to thank their help, too.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for all you've done. Okay, Charlie, I'm going to stop you there. Okay, so we are here for a dog hearing at 7:45. And so I would ask that the parties please come up front. And anybody that is here that plans on testifying during the dog hearing, I need you to stand up, and I need you to give Pam your name and your address, and then you'll be sworn in.
Norine.
Okay.
Does one raise your ID? Raise your ID. Do you wish to help during these proceedings in the selection?
Yes.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you for coming up. We're going to have Norine, please, explain the situation to the board.
Basically, we had a dog bite at 24 J Street, and that happened on 10/18/2018. We had a visiting nurse. The dog... The dog owner had the dog where it was supposed to be, which was in a kennel, which was in a cage. The dog owner did everything correctly. As they were getting ready to leave, the visiting nurse...
Excuse me, not a visiting nurse. I'm a visiting angel.
A caregiver. Caregiver. You know, was consoling the dog and reached in, and that's when the bite occurred.
Okay.
It was not a dog.
Okay.
She wasn't consoling the dog. The dog was sound asleep with his back turned. I was taking my mother out to her doctor's appointment. It was 12:45 in Kingston. I had gone into the bathroom for a minute. She's never had any contact with this dog. She's only been to my house a couple of times.
No, that's not true. I haven't had it that many before.
Excuse me. Excuse me. One at a time.
Okay. She's never had any contact with the dog whatsoever. So why she would be going over to a sleeping dog and know the dog was sleeping, because the dog cries and howls when I leave and I was leaving. So she was supposed to be walking my mother out to the car. My mother uses a walker. There's wood floors. I couldn't understand why I wasn't hearing the walker coming out. There was no bark. There was no sound of a cage rattling, nothing. Why are you saying goodbye to a dog, which is what she said, not that she was consoling a dog? She told everybody that she was patting the dog goodbye, who's sleeping in his cage. I come out of the bathroom because I'm hearing no noise of the walker coming out. She's over by my sink with a dry paper towel wrapped around her hand and said that the dog bit her. I'm baffled. The dog's locked in his cage. I was at... I asked... I offered to wash it. I said I had hydrocleanse, Bactracin. She wouldn't let me see it. She wouldn't wash it. She said, "I'll just take another paper towel." I finally forced at least some Band-Aids on her. Then we go out to the driveway, and I tell her not to help with my mother, but clearly she's fine because she's still helping with my mother in getting her in the car. Then she gets in her own car, and I keep waving her out of the driveway, and she won't leave. And I'm... She's supposedly injured. There's no blood. There's just paper towels wrapped around her hand, and I don't believe the dog bit her. But even if he did bite her, they task you if you're sleeping in your bed, and a stranger reaches in and hits you on the back or touches you on the head, you're probably going to swing or do something, and I don't think we can hold the dog to a higher standard.
Could I cut you off at this point? She just said it was her fault.
But I don't want my dog to have a bite on his record.
Could I cut you off?
I don't know why there was so much to do over this, anyway. It was just a dog bite.
Did you have to go to the hospital?
Yes, I did.
Were there stitches? Were there...
No, they didn't stitch a finger. And it's fine, as you can see.
Yes.
It was just deep, and it bled a lot. That's why I wrapped the paper towel. I rinsed my hand under the faucet first. And first of all, let's go back to the beginning. The dog was not sleeping when I saw the dog. The dog was very nervous and upset because we were leaving, and I understand that. I have a dog of my own, and so I love animals. And so the dog was... You know, I could tell the dog was anxious. So I was trying to console the dog. I don't know where that came from, that she said about the dog, but I was trying to console the dog, not say goodbye to the dog.
She said she was patting the dog goodbye.
I don't think it...
It's an aberration.
I don't think it matters. I think what matters is that she put her hand in the cage and that she's taking ownership for that.
She was helping my mother go out, and I... And I just...
What type of actions... What type of actions would you like to see happen?
Excuse me?
What action would you like to see happen?
What action was what?
With this board. What action would you like to see from this board tonight?
I don't want any action.
No, I don't think she was here for that. Yeah. I understand you're trying to get it on record.
So it's policy that every time there's a bite, and it's reported by a health agency, then we have to hold the dog.
I understand.
So... And I understand you're concerned that your dog would have a bite on its record.
I don't think he bit her. Do you have the medical records?
Yes, it's a procedure. It's definitely a procedure.
Where... Why aren't they here? Because I don't believe she bit the dog. And I just want to tell you why I'm upset about this. She came a half-hour late and proceeded to tell me about a scam she was running with a car accident where somebody...
Excuse me. This has nothing to do with the dog, the bite. I understand that, but we need to stick to points.
This is a person who likes to sue people.
Okay, so that has nothing to do with this.
I'm not suing anybody.
Yes.
Well, you can't, because I came out of the bathroom.
Okay. So I don't want to interrupt you, but I think that we need to...
This is beyond the scope of this hearing.
This is beyond the scope of this hearing, and so we don't get involved with lawsuits. We get involved with the safety of the community when there's a dog.
And it appears that the owner did not do anything incorrectly. The dog's not at fault.
No.
It's clear. The person who...
Who was injured isn't looking for us to do anything.
I don't see where we need to put any kind of a bite on this dog's record.
Right. So we'll put... We'll make a motion to have no action.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Great, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Norine.
You're welcome.
I'll see you.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
All right. So Charlie, I think our next appointment is...
Eight.
At 8:00. So we have another five minutes. Yeah.
Well, Richard, do you want to talk to Richard now? We can move this along.
Okay. All right. Come on up, Richard.
Okay.
I don't want to talk, Anne.
I listen to me enough. I know I don't want to talk to you. How are you all?
Aye.
We are well. How are you?
Very good, thank you. We... Just to point out, the channels are up and running. They worked for a little while as we were changing to the new playback system. It should be more stable. Among the things I'm here today really to talk about is the possibility of going live for these meetings. It's going to require, you know, talk to Caesar about it. It's easy enough to do. We just need a dedicated IP address that will allow us to go live. Now, whether or not you guys want to go live is to certain degree of material in that by allowing the connection to be made, we can then record it back at the studio and turn it around faster regardless. Doesn't have to be put out live, but it does allow us to record it from here as it's happening there.
So instead of being viewed on Thursday, it may come out on Wednesday instead?
That's correct. Yeah, it would make the process much quicker.
Well, I don't know if I liked it or not. I'm not... I used to be in myself if it's going live, and that's not good.
I don't think it'll change you.
So the only benefit of going live is an extra day, a day earlier for...
Yeah, well, it allows us to have it ingested into two places. So if there happens to be a problem with the car or something...
Oh, so it isn't just recorded here, it's recorded at the studio?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I was missing here.
And beyond that, it's possible that being live in this setting might actually get you more people to come in. I'm not sure whether that's something you want, but someone can see it on the channel and then come in to make a comment if it was relevant.
I'm not sure that's a great idea.
That's good, but...
No offense, anybody.
But obviously, for a town meeting, it doesn't make sense for you guys because you need four...
Sure.
You might deter people if they're able to sit at home watching. But Clifton bought in. Carver's gone live for years. It's not unusual, and it would afford us the ability to go live with any meeting held in this room.
Oh.
So...
So when we take a break, though, like, that would be on... Like, they'd have to really be good about cutting the key.
Right. Yeah. Biggest thing they need to do is cut the sound.
Yeah.
And then we can put up a graphic. We can actually be working with teaching videographers how to use the graphics, because we can then have an opening thing, even have a lower third put in. So basically, by the time it leaves here, it could be ingested and ready to play.
Yeah, ready to play.
Yeah, we used to have opening credit.
Because we can then have an opening thing, even have a lower third put in. So basically by the time it leaves here, it could be, be ingested and ready to play.
Yeah, ready to play.
Yeah, we used to have opening credit, like we used to have an opening thing and it would show our faces.
I, I don't know, that's a good idea either.
Oh, no, no, I don't want that.
That would scare a lot of people away.
Now, we've got an actual opening with music and everything, but this would be, we'd be able to put it on right here.
So is that determinative music?
It was pretty much.
Only when we're leading the meeting.
It was Leave It To Beaver.
Winter Soldier.
I mean, I think it's, if it's easier, I'm fine with it, but it's.
Well, I mean, there's two pieces, which is the live, but versus the, it gets still taped, but the data is set and it ends up being.
I like, I like this.
I don't know what, I don't know what, I don't know if the boards, if the board's saying yes to live as in right then and there, or if the board's saying, hey, sure, you know, make the connections so the data gets there earlier.
I don't see a difference to, you know, it's. I, I mean, we're going to tape it here or we're going to tape it there at the same time. I don't see where there's any real.
No, no, we're going to be live too.
You could be live if you chose to be. And the reality is we're sending it on at this point. We are speaking in both pieces.
Yes.
First one is, just to let you know, I'd like to be able to do this with.
Like right now, this is live.
The second would be, do, do you want the meeting to be able to, do you want the meetings to go live?
So.
And it's one of those things with, with the capability there, there may be another board down the line who wouldn't want it live.
Yeah, like the finance committee or.
One of the next people sitting in these seats.
Exactly.
Oh, yeah.
It's just sort of making sure the connection's in place. It's just a matter of flipping the switch.
So, we make the final decision whether it goes over live.
Yes.
Instantaneously or whether or not you just tape it and you don't do any changes.
Right, we wouldn't be doing that per, every meeting. We have a policy as to whether it's going or not going.
Well, there are times when we need to get word out pretty quick, you know, before a town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with live because I, yeah.
I mean, it isn't like they're editing it anyway.
Right.
So it doesn't, you know, it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
If you make a faux pas, you make a faux pas. It's going to go on either way.
How long, does it cost us any more money if we do? Okay.
Speaking of costs, at some point, I, I want to see a, um, breakdown of the entire budget, um, for Area 58. What we're doing and what the contribution is here. And I, I think a lot of people don't understand how that ultimately gets funded. Because Comcast does a pretty good job of making it very obscure on their bill.
They're very secretive.
Yes, exactly. Ex- exactly. Uh, even when you try to ask about it, nobody can give you a straight answer. But I, I, just because the numbers are right up there, I would, I'd like to take a good hard look at that.
Yeah, we can definitely have that.
I'd, I'd appreciate that.
Um, but in fact, the end of next month, we'll be voting on this year's 2019 budget melapan for you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that. I appreciate it.
Well, I would move that we go, that we accept the terms as stated. That we can go live if we want to, but unless we say it goes live, that it doesn't.
Well, I, I think it's either all in or all out.
No, that's not what you said.
Well, no, in terms of whether we go live or not.
Yeah, when you go live, but whether or not you go live instantaneously to, to being viewed by spectators.
Or what we could call live live.
Yeah.
Um, I would prefer to have basically a blanket policy because that makes it easier on my staff.
You know what you're doing, yeah.
Blankets have holes in them.
Why don't we roll in just getting it to go live, make sure that's all set.
And then we talk about it again. That's the smart thing.
Okay. I'm in.
Okay.
Okay, awesome. Is that a motion?
So what was the motion?
So make the connection. Don't go live live, yes, but make the connection.
Glad you quoted me, that's great. I coined a phrase. It's really good. I did something to them.
Okay, so who's going to, uh?
Second.
Second. No, I moved it.
He moved it, so.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight, see, this is what happens when you go live live.
Do we get makeup people if we go live live?
It's not on the budget, but it could be.
Hair and makeup.
I'm as good as I'm going to get, I'm sorry to tell you.
I need hair and makeup. Alright, anything else?
That is it.
Perfect. That was super sentry. It was very nice to see you. Alright, take care.
As always, you look good, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you, you, yeah, awesome. Thank you. Alright, Steve, do you want to, do you want to just do Steve? Come on down. Oh my gosh.
Beaverino.
So Kim, they have the cemetery.
Take care, Rick.
They do.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yeah, right, that's right.
I'm so sorry, I'm still.
It's very expensive to get buried these days.
So we are, we are here to talk about, um, cemetery fees. And so it's been a number of years before we, since we've looked at them and it needs some adjusting because as everybody knows, budget costs increase with salaries going up and health insurance going up and all those things that it's important to look at our fees to make sure that they are in line. So Steve's done some research and he has some proposals before us for what the new fees would be. So I don't know if you want to take off some there. Okay, so it looks like we're not really going up.
Just on the residents and the first part, from the 125 to 175. So that will be a total of 340. And then the rest, I started a whole different column for non-residents.
Yes.
And that's all the prices that have changed. And I also changed the, uh, the winter, our winter, um, burials.
Interments.
And Monday through Friday after one is $200 because we're living in a cavity all the time.
Yes.
And then.
Where is it?
The compressor. It used to be the hundred dollars for the December to April. And we don't always use the compressor, so I can't see charging people something we're not using.
Okay.
So I want to do the compressor separate, so if you have to use the compressor, we'll charge them then.
Okay. Alright, perfect.
So there's not a hell of a lot of changes at all?
No, just mostly the. Non-resident and.
How does this compare to other towns and?
We're still pretty low.
You still feel comfortable that we're charging enough?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Anybody have any questions on fees? Do I have a motion that we approve the new fees as printed?
So, second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Aight.
Super easy.
Wow, but I just did, I missed one thing, sorry.
Oh, what did you?
Oh, now you're making us look bad for live live.
Oh, the planting.
The planting, I put on it after approval because.
Yeah, that's important. Yeah.
Some of the stuff that people are putting in. I, I wanted to bring some pictures, but my camera didn't.
No, that's fine. So we'll just, we'll just, we'll vote, we'll do a voting that each new planting needs to be approved by the, by the cemetery superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
Perfect. No, we totally understand that.
And then the regulations, you want them to approve the update.
Did you do all that too?
Yep. Yep.
As presented by the cemetery.
Yeah, the regulations, so they're, they're 2018 Halifax Central Cemetery Rules and Regula- Regulations. Yep.
Yeah, it was going from 10 to 16.
16.
Right. Well, because 16 is the last one, is the, well, that's kind of, I have 15.
You guys only have 15?
You only have 15, yeah.
What's number 16?
So I think he has 2018, right? He's at 2018 at the very top, right? And that goes one through 15.
Yeah.
And then 2017, left from one through another 10.
Okay, yeah, but he said he has.
He said he had 2016.
The 16 one, is that the, is that the planting policy?
Can you reach 16 to him, Steve?
Yeah.
The cemetery superintendent for the board of select and may have waived any of these right.
Yeah, we have that as well.
We have that as 16.
Can I just take a pieceie and I can?
I don't see what's on the pole, but it thought that was, looked like it was white.
I don't think I had anything else.
Yeah, something looks like it was whiteed out here.
See, I have something whiteed out here.
See right there, and that was, that's original, yeah.
Yeah. Did you have it on there twice?
Nine is new. There, oh, no, no, no Shepherd hooks, yep. New 10. Oh, here, uh, no, we got that one.
Yeah, all they got is 15 because the bottom one was whiteed out. He wrote 16 on your paperwork.
Here it is, there's two.
He just read it, which is 15 on ours.
Oh, you know what it is?
It was on there twice.
It's on there twice. So number 16, 15 and 16, it's the same paragraph.
Yeah, that's why it got whiteed out.
Yeah, 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 so that's why. We're good. We're good.
So it's 15.
Well, we really wanted to emphasize.
We're good. Alright, that's why when you read it was the same? Alright, cool. So we're good. So we have a motion to adopt the regulations for 2018.
15 written regulations.
15 regulations. I have a motion from Tom and a second from Troy. All those in favor?
Aight.
Okay, there we go.
Good, you can go.
Now it's official. Thank you for all your work on that.
And also I want to, because you know, I talked to the high school about baking signs because we have no signs up there.
Yes.
And I'm trying to design something that looks old, not new and.
Rustic.
Yeah.
Okay, rustics is a better word.
Fits the original age of the cemetery.
Right, and I'd like to put like section A, one through whatever, so people don't know where.
Yeah, so that they're not.
So they're going to be like on poles or signs, like a four by four, a four by four or something?
Wooden sign just to let people know what the section is and what numbers are in that.
That's a good idea.
So then, all we have to do is get the material and the school does it.
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you so much.
And I haven't forgotten about the wall.
Yes, the wall, yeah, yeah.
That's just.
You've been busy. You've got a lot going on. We're going into winter with plowing and capital plans and all that kind of stuff and budgeting, so.
But I did want to find out about opening a 40 by 50 section of a field that we have out there for regular birds because we're basically almost out of.
On top of each other out there, huh?
In mid all the sections.
Okay, so do we need to?
Just go.
Okay, alright, so you want to open what section?
Uh, right next to the double deeps.
Yeah.
You have that field where I was showing you the cremation car.
Yes.
Right next to the double deeps.
Okay.
We'll make a road going through around this way in the back.
We'll get, we'll get a diagram.
Yeah, I was going to say we need a diagram.
Yeah, I remember.
Save two spots for me.
Okay, do I have a motion that we open up?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aight.
And Steve will send the diagram to the board for our records.
Okay, perfect. Okay, do.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We agree, so you let your slide.
Oh, what did you guys, did you guys do the gas tanks?
Yeah, yeah, proved it.
Alright, set.
And I wanted to know about Penn Street.
Oh, that was the other latest.
Yeah, I, uh, I talked to the company that I hired about getting a grant and right now they're at. Um, they're still confirming rounds three and four, we're in round five.
Oh.
So there's only two people, two towns that went for the grant on five, so hopefully we can get it. But they want something done right now, so I'm going to have to come up with 175 to 200 to get the plans to fix the bridge.
Where are you going to come up with that?
I don't know. I'll have to use part of the chapter nine.
I was just going to say that stinks, but I think you're going to have to.
So, that's what I'm.
So the plans themselves will be 135 to 200 and then the construction is 200,000?
200,000 for plans.
I almost fell on my chair.
The bridge is not even worked, it wasn't built.
It's only 20 feet wide. But, you know, water and.
It's because they've never done this before and there's, there's no plans in the drawer, right?
I want to talk to the bog guys there because it's basically for them to get rid of that water. And I want to see if they could help us do some of the work or pay some of it up.
At least the design.
I don't know if we can do that, but.
There's nothing saying they can't provide some money. We, we can't.
Donate.
We, yeah.
We can't force them to.
Right, I just figured they, they need that water to leave their place, so.
Well, what if we just fill it in? Do we have to, do we have to have a bridge?
Well, then it will just flood the road, so that won't work very well. Make a big ditch on that side, you know, we dig a pond, we make our own pond, um.
Can we just get a ferry and ferry people across from one side to the other?
We could do that.
Well, yeah.
Well, if we just.
200 grand for a plan.
We will build a boat.
Oh, we can tell the bog on us, we're going to fill it in.
But I just wanted to know that's where we stand with that. Did I, do I have plans?
Wow, that's not good news.
And they said if we get the grant, we can put it to that.
Yeah, they're reimbursed it, yeah.
Okay, when we go up to 500,000 for the grant, we don't know what the total is going to be.
Right, because if the design is.
The plans are 200,000, I'm guessing it isn't going to be too good.
Right.
Is this?
That's crazy.
I, I, that, that's more than we.
I can draw a picture of a bridge crossing over.
I can go online and find some plans with somebody else.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, I mean.
That's why I want to find out if we can actually do something like that.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure that they're all proprietary, so you have to pay some kind of a fee.
Yeah, you probably can, you probably can buy it from somebody else, probably a lot cheaper than 200,000.
Because I know they used to just use a private contractor to fit, make little fixes here and there, but I don't know if legally we can still do that.
Well, design, build kind of, yeah.
Yeah.
It gets so difficult to try to stay above the water right here.
I mean, that.
I'm glad that a lawnmower.
It makes, almost makes no sense.
For a piece of paper that might be obsolete by the time you get it.
Yeah.
I mean, they, I know they have to do some geological work.
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah, but.
I can't see.
It's in the wetland.
Not that much, yeah.
It's on the wetland.
They would drill a few holes.
It's just like the difference between the price and on the bids.
Yeah.
209 to 40, 4040.
Yeah.
That's quite a difference.
Yeah.
On the same.
The same project, yeah. Well, it depends on how busy certain firms are. They throw numbers up against the wall.
Right, that, I just talked to this one because they went for the grant with me. So I'm thinking of talking to a couple of the ones to see what I can get for pricing.
Yeah, well, I mean, you have to, we still through the exercise.
Right. So.
Wow.
It's not good news.
Pine Street, yeah.
Yeah, it's not good news. Especially with Town Rose, we were talking a little bit about that with the finance committee. Your needs for next year and perhaps more staffing and.
How bad will it flood if we fill it in?
Only certain times do you.
I'm still looking at that. Well, then it could flow all the road into the, into the bog.
Yeah, 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 we'll work on it.
Yeah, I'm sure everybody heard I hired Melissa.
The recycling, yeah.
And she's going to be working two days with the highway.
Oh, cool.
So it's the same thing Jason did.
She drives too? She's got a license for this?
Yes. She was driving a bus and then she went to Republic, working for the.
Really?
Yeah. So then she already went to class to get her license. She did that when she found out she was going to go for a job, so that's.
Wow, proactive.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good.
Well, congratulations.
And she lives in Halifax.
Wow.
That's even better.
That's even better, that's ice on the cake.
Everybody that lived in town.
That's awesome.
They care about the money more. That's how I look at it.
She'll be plowing?
Yeah, she's going to have her own flower, sand.
That's awesome.
I mean, she was okay with it. She said fine.
Yeah, okay, perfect. All good news except for that, you know, 200 Gs.
Yeah, that's only happened when I found another bridge to start.
And we were so nice to you.
Which bridge?
Haywood Street.
Oh.
Yeah, that was.
Can't you do anything with that's your name?
Well, we've got one.
There's none you can do with that one.
There are bridges that are pretty much.
Yeah.
I remember we used to have to park one down on, uh.
East Street.
East Street, yeah.
Whatever ring.
Well, I remember that.
Yeah, yeah, to keep floating away.
Yeah, yeah. That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, because when it takes it, um.
Went overflow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where preschool is, so.
So.
Let's all pitch in together, just buy a Powerball lottery or something like.
I said that to my wife, if we won, I was going to be donating the money.
Yeah, new roads for everyone. You get a road and you get a road.
May end abruptly, but you'll get a road.
Yeah.
It looks great until the end.
You know, so that's all I can tell you about the Pine Street.
Well, thank you, thank you, thank you for your efforts.
Trying.
No, really, you're doing an awesome job.
I want to figure out how to do grants better.
No, I know, but you're really doing a tremendous job.
That's a skill.
And I talked to.
Charlie has a very good skill about writing grants.
He hasn't ever done that before, so.
We don't do that.
He did the Mayflower, so he's, he's, no, he's pretty good, he wrote the grant for the Mayflower.
That's how old I am.
Over the dirt.
Depends on the dirt.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good night, Steve.
Alright, take care. Alright, so. Alright, Charlie. Is that it?